Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to 2020, and the first city council meeting and the first committee of the whole meeting, not only of the year, but depending on how you keep score at home, of the decade. I know, see, there's a debate on that.
Oh, no, right.
No, we're not going to debate it now, don't worry about it. I don't want to make the press match.
It won't be settled here.
Yeah, I'm sure it won't make the front page. It will not be settled here. But if you'd like to bring it up in a new business. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call for our city council meeting.
Bruno.
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Cavan.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
McGowan.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask none other than the man who does not believe it's the new decade, Mike Bruno, to lead us in the pledge.
Which is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
No motion.
Alderman Marx makes that motion. Alderman Swanson makes the second. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll call.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously, 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $1,475,553.37.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city's website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in each council member's packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or comments on the bills presented? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Item 10 passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent, otherwise known as unanimously. We skip down to items number 12A. Consider ordinance number 2020-06, amending Chapter 2 definitions of Title 11 zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code, adding Chapter 16 Inclusionary Housing to Title 11 zoning, amending Chapter 4 Public Open Space of Title 12 subdivisions of the Geneva Municipal Code, all related to incentives for the creation of affordable housing within the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clemmons. All of you have before you the report presented by, and summarizing the discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission. But before we discuss, I will turn it over to our Assistant City Administrator, old what's-his-name.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words. This past June, the city council had a policy discussion regarding different affordable housing strategies. This discussion was followed by a second meeting in August where city council discussed development incentives, inclusionary, amongst other things, inclusionary housing requirements. At that time, the committee directed staff to draft incentives for creation of affordable housing units in the city of Geneva. Since that meeting, staff has drafted the proposed amendments, Title 11 and Title 12, and reviewed them with the Planning and Zoning Commission this past December. Upon review, commission has recommended approval of the proposed amendments as presented this evening. A summary is included in your packet, and then this evening as well, we have Community Development Director David DeGroot here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for either the Assistant City Administrator or our Director of Community Development, Mr. DeGroot?
Alderman Bruno, was there not a presentation tonight?
There can be, if you'd like. Some comments, Mr. DeGroot?
Do you have just a brief presentation? I can provide an overview of the proposed amendments?
Forgive me for the oversight, Mike. I'm still stunned by the decade comment.
If I can figure out what I'm doing wrong here. I've got the mouse up there, but I can't see it down here. The mouse is up there, but not down here. Start the show from the beginning. That's what I'm trying to do, but I don't know what to do. The cursor? There you go. All right, sorry about that. So I won't go through the summary. This is what Ben just summarized, kind of how we got here this evening with draft incentives for affordable housing. At the public hearing, the Plan Commission received testimony from city staff and members of the public. They did recommend approval of the proposed amendments as they're included in your packets this evening. The commission also had quite a bit of discussion on whether or not we should be going forward with incentives or requirements, the similar discussion that we had with the Committee of the Whole back in August. They understood the direction provided by the Committee of the Whole and recommend approval of the incentives, but it was their opinion that we really should be going forward with requirements, and asked the council to consider directing staff to draft affordable housing requirements for consideration. And that discussion really focused on the limited number of opportunities we have in Geneva for new residential development, and trying to take advantage of those opportunities while we have them. The commission also recommended that if the incentives are approved as proposed this evening, that they be reviewed on an annual basis to really determine their effectiveness and if they need to be modified. So the first part of the proposed amendments is to define the listed terms here. The definitions shown are consistent with the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, and are really necessary for the effective implementation of the incentives. The second part is to add Chapter 16 Inclusionary Housing to the zoning ordinance. This consists of nine different sections included in your packet. I'm not going to go through each section, but I'll just try to touch on kind of the highlights and the incentives. Section 2 outlines what type of developments would be eligible for incentives. That's really any residential development in the following instances: a development consisting of new construction or mixed-use construction with a residential component; a development consisting of the renovation or reconstruction of over 50% of the square footage of an existing residential structure that increases the number of units from the original; a development that will change the existing use of a building in whole or in part from non-residential to residential; and then a development that includes the conversion of multifamily rental properties to condominiums. Section 3 outlines the general requirements to be considered eligible for incentives. We're recommending that a minimum of 15% of a development is affordable to be eligible for incentives. That's consistent with the city's adopted goal of having 15% of all new housing units being affordable. Section 3 also defines what is required for a for-sale or for-rent unit to be considered affordable and eligible for incentives. These are the same measures that the state uses to determine our affordable housing stock, so it's important that we're consistent with those requirements. If the city is providing incentives, we want to make sure that we're meeting the state's minimum requirements. As shown in the draft, we're also recommending that there's a certificate of qualification issued to any household whose income has been verified to meet those units. Section 3 also establishes integration requirements, so affordable housing units are required to be dispersed amongst market-rate units, constructed concurrently with the market-rate units, and be compatible with market-rate units with substantially similar building materials, finishes on the exterior. Interiors can have different finishes, and floor area, but must have the same bedroom mix and the same energy efficiencies. So if a development complies with all of those requirements, what are the incentives the city can offer? The first proposed is to waive permit fees, plan review fees, utility connection fees, and cash contributions to the school and park districts when land is not being required. As proposed, these waivers would only apply to the affordable units within a development. Customary fees would apply to the market-rate units. Other ways to offset costs include TIF funds and property contributions. The city has two established TIFs where eligible costs could be considered for the creation of affordable housing. That would be something the city could review on a case-by-case basis. The city can also offer city-owned property below fair market value, or donate that property to a development containing affordable housing. The other incentive included in the draft is to increase density. It's proposed to allow one additional market-rate unit for each proposed affordable unit, provided the total density does not exceed 115% of what would be allowed in the zoning district otherwise. So, for example, if a development has a maximum density of 20 units to qualify for the incentives, at least three of those would have to be affordable. We would allow an additional three units then for a total of 23 units instead of the minimum 20. To implement the density bonus, an applicant would be allowed to vary minimum lot area, lot frontage, and lot coverage requirements, and setback requirements to accommodate for those additional units.
So that's kind of the meat and potatoes of the draft ordinance. As promised, I didn't want to go through each section in great detail. I really just covered Sections 2 through 4, but if there's other areas we want to go through, I'd be happy to go through those or take questions. The other change to note is to Title 12. This is just clarifying that affordable units may not be considered when calculating land cash requirements for school and park district donations. Questions or comments from Mr. DeGroot based on the presentation? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David. I for one am very excited to have this in front of us tonight. In watching the PZC too, and as you mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to have a whack at reviewing the concept of mandates instead of just leaving incentives, and I would concur with that. So if the council would agree, I'd ask staff to have the PZC come up with some ideas for mandates on affordable housing. Thank you.
Before I recognize the next speaker, Mr. DeGroot, it's my understanding that while the Planning and Zoning Commission did indeed express an interest in perhaps in ordinance, they also believed that this is a first positive step toward, quote, "doing something." And that based on that "doing something," that annual review is in place so that they can measure the impact of this something. Is that a fair statement?
It is. They felt that, I guess first they felt that a requirement would be their preferred way to go. They understood that that's not what they were voting on that evening. They're supportive of the incentives as a first step. If that's approved, or requirements were approved, either way, they think it should be reviewed annually to determine its effectiveness.
So is it fair to respond to Alderman Bruno's statement that that review and that consideration would be done a year from implementation of these?
I think that's fair to see if we're successful with the incentives, to review it in a year, and if we're not, maybe that would be an appropriate time to review requirements. Certainly positive regardless, but I think the arguments at PZC were that we have limited parcels if, you know, and as development moves ahead, some of those parcels that could have that affordable housing might be off the market and just have fewer, we'd have fewer options to choose from. I'm not saying we have to vote in that language now, but I think personally I'd like to see that language hashed out, and then we can debate it next time it's in front of us. My opinion.
I'm going to ask the city attorney to opine on those comments, just so that we're not, just so the issue's not clouded as we continue discussing what's before us, so...
I think the Alderman Julie speaking is something about new business down the line. For purposes of tonight, the ordinance, the proposition in front of us is what's being voted on. If there's a discussion about amending, changing the direction, and/or a new proposition that would be akin to new business, for all intents and purposes.
I can bring it up then. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Burkhart?
Thank you, David. Can we go back to the last thing you had up? I think it was about the land cash. So basically, if a developer does affordable housing, they could take that out of the calculations for dedications and contributions to the school district and park district.
Right. Upon written request and review by the city.
Right, okay. And then can we go back to the, about the city, if the city owned land, we could sell at a rate below market value, or donate the land? How do you, how does, how would you envision that working? Do you think that's something like a developer would come to us and say, you know, we know the city owns this piece of property, we're interested in? Is that a negotiation that start? And how involved is the city council in something like that?
Well, the city council would definitely be involved in the sale of any property in those negotiations to sell it below that fair market value. It could occur that way, where a developer approaches the city. The city could take a more aggressive approach and go out for an RFP on city-owned land, and actively seek out developers to construct affordable housing on properties we own.
And it could be though, it could be a development that we would decide, it's not 100% affordable housing, but it could be 15% new affordable housing, or 25%, whatever the city decides is worth those units to, you know, I guess it would be a balancing act of...
I mean, as drafted, the minimum would be 15% to be eligible for the incentives.
Right, okay.
But it could certainly be more than that.
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Maladra, and then Alderman Kilburg?
Sorry. So there was one part that I didn't really understand. Probably everybody else did. I can't tell what page I'm on, but Section 5 about affordability controls. When we talk about the sale of a property and the value of that being limited, does passage of this cap the value of properties throughout town now, or is that something that just applies to the person who's taking advantage of our incentives when they go to sell?
It applies to that property.
After they take advantage of incentives, or right now?
For the affordability controls, and you're talking about a future sale, it's not capping, it's not capping the price of the unit, just to use a number, you're not saying it can't be any higher than $250,000. You're saying it has to remain affordable to somebody making 80% of AMI.
Right.
So the property value can increase, and it can sell for higher than that.
Yeah, I get, I got that part. My question is, does that, does that apply now to, and to which properties does it apply, or does it apply after something else happens?
I guess I'm not, I'm not totally tracking the question, and I apologize.
So there's a bunch of houses engineered, right?
Right.
How do we determine to which houses that would apply?
It would apply to those houses that have entered into an affordable housing agreement.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, gotcha.
Alderman Kilburg?
Just so I'm clear, on the, on the land cash waiver, that would only apply to the affordable units, right, in a development or subdivision?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir, please take the roll call.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Item 12A passes with 10 affirmative votes, with zero nay votes and zero absent. Item 12B is to consider Resolution Number 2020-02 authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for animal control services, and exercise of the one-year extension option for 2020. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Swanson, and seconded by Mr. Marx. Questions or comments after Mr. McCready provides us a brief summary?
That's a vast improvement. The city works with Metro West Council of Governments to negotiate agreements for animal control services with Kane County. The current agreement expired in 2018, and a new one was negotiated in 2019 with an option for two one-year extensions. When the city received notice that we had not exercised the option to extend, it was realized that the original IGA was never signed. Tonight's item allows the city administrator to execute that agreement, and also to exercise a one-year extension for 2020. There is no cost to enter this agreement, as it is a fee-based service.
Comments or questions for the august Mr. City Administrator, Assistant City Administrator? Excuse me. You can bark, you can meow, anything. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Item 12B passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 12C is to consider Resolution Number 2020-03 amending the city of Geneva Personnel Policy Manual. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman McGowan makes the motion?
Second.
And Alderman Kilburg makes the second. The most learned, Mr. McCready.
Thank you, sir. In light of recent legislative changes pertaining to the, I shouldn't say recent, but in light of what's become into effect here after January 1, 2020 pertaining to the personal use of cannabis in the state of Illinois, this item allows staff to make the necessary changes to the city's personnel policy manual to ensure the city remains a safe and drug-free workplace.
Any questions or comments regarding the recommended resolution? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The resolution passes unanimously, Mr. Clerk? Item 12D, consider Resolution Number 2020-04 authorizing execution of a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Geneva and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded, ooh, it's a tough one. Who's been in trouble less with the law? Alderman Clemmons. The most stoic, Mr. McCready.
Let's make sure we're here. Okay, good, good.
Before you this evening is a four-year collective bargaining agreement which replaces the agreement with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Relations Council, which expired in 2019. This four-year successor agreement has been tentatively approved by the union representatives and management team and runs through 2023. The agreement includes minor changes, which provide for operational efficiencies, and other changes that align with the personnel policy changes previously discussed. In addition to myself, Chief Passarelli, who is a member of the management bargaining team, is here with us this evening to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the Assistant City Administrator and/or the chief from the dais? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Item 12B passes with 10 affirmative votes, with zero nay votes and zero absent. Item 12C is to consider Resolution Number 2020-03 amending the city of Geneva Personnel Policy Manual. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman McGowan makes the motion?
Second.
And Alderman Kilburg makes the second. The most learned, Mr. McCready.
Thank you, sir. In light of recent legislative changes pertaining to the, I shouldn't say recent, but in light of what's become into effect here after January 1, 2020 pertaining to the personal use of cannabis in the state of Illinois, this item allows staff to make the necessary changes to the city's Personnel Policy Manual to ensure the city remains a safe and drug-free workplace.
Any questions or comments regarding the recommended resolution? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The resolution passes unanimously, Mr. Clerk? Item 12D, consider Resolution Number 2020-04 authorizing execution of a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Geneva and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded, ooh, it's a tough one. Who's been in trouble less with the law? Alderman Clemmons. The most stoic, Mr. McCready.
Let's make sure we're here. Okay, good, good.
Before you this evening is a four-year collective bargaining agreement which replaces the agreement with the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Relations Council, which expired in 2019. This four-year successor agreement has been tentatively approved by the union representatives and management team and runs through 2023. The agreement includes minor changes, which provide for operational efficiencies, and other changes that align with the personnel policy changes previously discussed. In addition to myself, Chief Passarelli, who is a member of the management bargaining team, is here with us this evening to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the Assistant City Administrator and/or the chief from the dais? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemmons.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Item 12D has been passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We're at number 13, folks, new business and public comment. Any new business or public comment from anyone joining us this evening? Anyone from the dais? Alderman Bruno?
If, if there are others on the council that feel as I do, that it would be good to review mandates in affordable housing ordinance sooner rather than later, I'd like to see that hashed out by PZC.
Hearing no...
I agree as well.
Where the hell you been? It's like, what'd you say? Edit that tape, by the way. Now, I need to ask the gentleman, Alderman Bruno, and perhaps as well Alderman Ruby, are you making a recommendation that within a year's time, or are you offering a motion, or excuse me, a direction by the Committee of the Whole to strategize about how best to direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider this matter at the next available date?
That, the latter. The, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission made, I think, good arguments in terms of and go back and redo this, because I feel like we just had this discussion a few months ago, and I thought that at that point in time, I don't remember the vote exactly, but I thought that we were all in favor of going this route that we just went tonight to go through and unanimously approve the incentives. So I guess for me personally, it's just a little bit, I felt like we just had this discussion and we, I thought that we were uniform across the board then, and now to go back to see if there's something else that we want to change a month later, I don't know, like I said, I'm not against having the discussion, I don't think that discussion ever is a bad thing to have, but I felt like we just did this, I guess is sort of my thought. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
So, are we talking about having a discussion at the Committee of the Whole and then going to Plan Commission? Or are we talking about...
That's correct, that's how I interpreted that.
Okay.
Well, that's... I interpreted as, the recommendation from you and Alderman Ruby was to schedule a Committee of the Whole meeting where we can discuss in more depth what it is we expect from the PZC as they deliberate regarding a ordinance-based program as opposed to an incentive-based program. But if I misunderstood, then I'm...
Well, it's, you might have misunderstood, but it's probably not your fault. No, I'm sure it's my fault. But staff had already brought up some of those items, and I think PZC were really amenable to that. I think we've got the language, but it just needs to be honed. I don't think we need to have that discussion again, but just simply having, sending to PZC an agenda item to say, what should that look like, should we decide to implement it? We'd have that language, we'd have that understanding, we may not, we may still hold on to that language for a year.
That's, the city attorney is helping me understand what I think is the appropriate process. If we remand or send to the PZC, hey, come up with a legislation that's an ordinance form that we could then consider again, but we're not going to say whether we'll consider it for implementation right away because we already have incentives, please do the work. I think that should be hashed out in terms of what that ordinance might look like at a committee meeting, number one. Number two, what I heard you say was, we might not actually implement anything the PZC does despite their best efforts, then why put them to work on a project that might not be considered right away since we've already adopted, as Alderman Caven said, the incentive program, which has not yet been tested?
Well, I would, I'm sure if we saw some massive run at properties, we can address this as needed. I withdraw my request, thanks.
Withdrawn entirely? Does anyone want to, does anyone want to give life to the otherwise supine recommendation?
I wouldn't want to give life to anything, but I was going to agree with what you were saying, I think it needs to be discussed here first. I think that, A, as we saw with the cannabis discussion, the PZC was, did not take kindly at the fact that we basically came to them and said, tell us what to do. I think we need to decide what mandates we want, if any. I agree with what Gabe said, we just discussed this in June, and at that time, we were shying away from mandates as a council, not as 10 individuals, but as a council. So I would, I would be more comfortable if we discuss first what we expect and what we want, and then go to the PZC and say, you know, in your language, how does this look?
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Mayor. So, trying to follow everything that's just happened here.
Let us know if you figure it out.
So I guess first, when I first waved my hand, it was just with Alderman Caven, yeah, I agree, I was going to come in here tonight, and it was just these incentives, and that seemed pretty good. You know, I watched the PZC meeting, I have a lot of trouble saying that, the PZC meeting, and, you know, they brought this up, it was kind of seeded there, not here, we did have a discussion, we agreed on a lot of stuff, and so what's changed is they seem to feel quite strongly that we should look at doing perhaps even a little more. So I think that's what's changed from all the original discussions back in June. I do think it would still be appropriate to discuss more. I don't think this is urgent, I don't think there's going to be a land rush, and I do think we can deal with that if that happens. But I think it'd still be appropriate to maybe have a discussion at some point as a committee of the whole regarding, should we have mandatory requirements? Should we have staff, you know, go back to PZC and have them look at something? I don't know the form it should take, but I do think there is some consensus, or at least there is some desire on the part of some of the people up here to look a little further at it or have further discussion. Doesn't mean that it's going to happen, but it does seem like there are some people that want to keep talking about it, so. How we do that, how we do it moving forward to keep everybody happy, I don't know, but I don't think you have to just kill it and withdraw it entirely.
Mr. DeGroot, any trouble you, sir? Do you recall, or perhaps Mr. McCready does, when we had the Committee of the Whole discussion regarding either incentive-based and/or ordinance-based affordable housing programs, what the vote was from the committee to advance it to the Plan Commission to discuss incentive-based? I believe Alderman Swanson was a nay vote, I believe, but don't quote me on that?
I wanted to see both.
You wanted to see both, okay.
I wanted to see incentives and...
Okay. So my question under the committee, or excuse me, the council is, how do we in good faith say tonight, to echo Alderman Caven, we've sent it to you once, thank you, we're sending it back as we changed our minds? Is that in essence what we're doing? Because I believe that overall, a majority of this council, or at the time committee, said, advance to PZC with incentive-based language.
Agreed, agreed, and I, like I said, I came in here tonight, and that was, that was fine, I'm just, from what I watched from them, it was, they're the ones that kicked this back to us and said, we would like you to consider this. And that's all I'm saying, is I don't think it's inappropriate to have that discussion, doesn't mean it's going to happen, or that, if I read that meeting correctly, I mean, I got the impression, please correct me if I'm wrong, or whoever else watched it, I got the impression that they even put those fees in lieu of to try to incentivize us to not feel scared to have the conversation. I don't think they even believed in the fee in lieu of, but they put it in there in their language because they wanted us to talk about it. So I just say, fine, we can talk about it, that's it, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not trying to say we should have mandatory policy in place, I don't know, that's for us to have a discussion about, and that, I think that the PZC would like us to have that discussion, that's all.
Did we not have that discussion?
We did, we, and we sent them, you know, the objectives that they hashed out, and, you know, they, as the recommending body, have come back and said, here's this, but they think we should have a further look at it, that's, and I'm just saying, I don't, I think there's other members up here also that would agree that it's not inappropriate to do that. If it is, I...
I don't think it's inappropriate at all, but I just want to make certain that the communication is clear.
Well, I don't think it's ever clear.
I'm sorry, could you clarify exactly what you... Alderman Burkhart, who has not spoken, then McGowan.
As a compromise, why don't we say, we'll talk about this in six months, if, about six months, that'll be a year from when we first talked about it as a committee, and talk about requirements, let this take hold, all of us can marinate it in a little bit. I mean, I think the problem with us saying, we'll wait until there's a land rush, is, that's inappropriate, we can't, oh, geez, they're interested in that property, you know, come on, guys, gather, we gotta, like, you know, and I think we've already seen big properties move forward here in Geneva, and we didn't, we don't have requirements in place, and so they're not going to be, fall under that. So I think, it seems like, I wasn't actually here in June, so I missed that unfortunately, but I think we're, we're taking baby steps on this, and everybody wants to, there seems to be interest in talking about it, requirements at least, but it seems like maybe we could put it on one of our fifth, or not fifth Mondays, oh my gosh, one of our policy discussions in five or six months. Thanks.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. I'd be willing to agree with Alderman Burkhart's suggestion to revisit this in six months' time. That is a time when a lot of people take their vacations, so that's one, that's one thing, I don't know if we would have a full council, but hopefully we'd have a good number of people here. And another thing to obviously consider is that in a year's time, if there has been no progress, or there hasn't been really good movement in the right direction, we would all have a lot of questions about, well, now should we consider some, like an ordinance, because nothing has really, nothing good has really come of just having incentives? So we would, I am imagining we would likely be having this conversation anyway, and we'd be requesting more information about what exactly would this ordinance look like? So better to get that information ahead of time anyway, so, yeah, I'd be agreeable to doing this in six months.
I'm just going to throw something out there for the heck of it. During our discussion, I believe it was June, when we discussed whether it be ordinance form and/or incentive form, June and August, I believe we heard fairly clearly from a number of you on the dais and a number of other people that an ordinance is in fact a disincentive, yet an incentive is indeed an incentive. Surety in the marketplace seems to drive these opportunities. If Mr. DeGroot and his team are marketing this opportunity to those in the affordable housing industry, and they know right off the bat that, wow, Geneva can perhaps donate its land, waive its fees, waive some of the land cash, that's surety, let's go talk to them. If it's an ordinance, like, huh, is that not a disincentive? That's the one reason I supported the incentive program originally. So, but I, I'll defer to the will of the council. Is there a majority of those who think we should schedule this in six months? Is there anyone who opposes scheduling this in six months? There is not anyone who has voiced opposition in at least revisiting this in six months? I would ask Mr. DeGroot and his team, with the assistance of this Assistant City Administrator, to find a date, if not in June, thereabouts, when all of us can be present and discuss that, but meanwhile, we're comfortable with what we've already decided on tonight?
We entered it.
We entered it, yeah, so it's good, so, okay.
It's done.
Anyone else new business? Alderman Kilburg.
I just wanted to draw some attention to the results of a recent study completed by Fermilab on the economic impact of the laboratory on Illinois's economy. It's a large federal employer. The study that was conducted and released in December, that because of the holidays, maybe some people missed, nearly a half a billion dollars in economic output for Illinois, 343 million dollars in earnings for Illinois residents that are employed by the laboratory, and it has created almost 5,400 jobs, that is an important asset for the tri-cities. And again, a lot of times Fermilab sort of operates in obscurity, but it's an economic engine that we never want to take for granted.
And it should be worth noting, Alderman Kilburg, please share with us how long you've been serving on their Community Outreach Advisory Committee.
Long time.
Isn't that something? He actually served with Enrico Fermi, it was amazing, it was like...
Nice guy.
And he was a nice guy. Thank you, Dean. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Alderman Marks makes that motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Give us 30 seconds, we'll switch over to the Committee of the Whole meeting. Good evening, folks, the Committee of the Whole meeting will begin in approximately 30 minutes. Let the record show that all the council members are present, we begin our Committee of the Whole meeting with the approval of the Regular Committee of the Whole minutes from December 16, 2019. Is there a motion? Motion by Swanson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Caven, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item 3A is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with WBK Engineering, including, excuse me, including Geason, is it Geason?
Geo-Sin.
Forgive me, sorry about that, man. The city attorney said it was Geason, sorry about that. Geo-Sin New Gen Strategies in an amount not to exceed $278,927.34 for the 2020 citywide, very important watershed study.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno.
Seconded.
Seconded by everybody, Maladra. I know Alderman Marks has been working on this for a long time. Questions or comments after Mr. McCready's brief commentary?
Item before you authorizes the city to enter into agreement with WBK Engineering to complete the citywide watershed study. This study will provide an evaluation of the stormwater issues throughout the community and includes a public input component, a prioritization of issues, and subsequent estimates for addressing them in the capital improvement program. The information from this study will be utilized in future budgeting processes and assist with long-term capital planning. The recommended consultant was selected from a competitive bidding process that included eight other initial respondents. The Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer is here this evening, along with the Public Works Director, and I believe a representative from the firm as well, to answer any questions that you may have regarding this item. Thank you.
From the dais, Alderman Kilburg.
I know that there are requirements that both the state and the county have enacted as it relates to watersheds. Is this in response to state and county regs so that we're complying, or is this an initiative that we've taken on on our own and it serves an important purpose for the community? Could someone comment on that? I guess I want to see how it fits together, because it's quite an expenditure.
Mr. Chismark, my apologies again for the mispronunciation of that, good Lord, man.
There's a...
This is Mr. Babika, he'll be addressing us regarding the...
We're going through a tri-party system here tonight, so Brian's going to answer the technical details, Greg Chismark will answer the implementation details, but this was more of a policy decision, how we got to this point, and the, really over the last five years, the last five consecutive strategic planning sessions, the, there's been ongoing drainage base, drainage concerns throughout the city, and it hasn't been limited to one specific quadrant or sector of the city, there is drainage issues throughout the community, whichever ward, for a variety of reasons. And what we wanted to take was a holistic approach, and that's what the study's going to do, we're going to review the entire city, not just what falls within the city, but also what's tributary to the city, because we take flow from St. Charles, because we're downstream from St. Charles, we take flow from West Chicago, because we're west of West Chicago.
Thank you, Mr. Babika.
Yeah, for the geography lesson, right? So that's where we're at, that's how we, that's how we got to this point, is that instead of looking at an isolated problem, and then maybe fixing a problem in that neighborhood, and then transferring it five blocks down closer to the river, we want to look at the entire system as one living, breathing organism, and then through the basis of that discussion and outreach with the public, as well as open houses with the public and interviewing staff from the historical perspective, start developing a comprehensive five-to-10-year capital improvement plan, which then we can present to the city council at future budget meetings, and then you all can make an informed decision instead of throwing Band-Aids on a problem. You have a whole picture, here's what's going on, here's what we feel it's going to cost is going to be, and then the 10 of you get the unavoidable task of figuring out how to pay for it.
Can you give me an example of where, for instance, if we had this type of information, it might have benefited the city? Over, maybe, you've been with us four or five years, six years?
Almost six.
Six years. So I'm just wondering, during your services for the community, where would this study have application?
We had a recurring problem in the Wildwood subdivision, in which we had unexpected flows through the stormwater collection system, as well as through the overflow routes, that we could not adequately answer to the public satisfaction or to our own satisfaction. And that's really, I want to say, is probably what Janice brought, started the seat of looking at the city holistically. We were able to do a micro-study of that, that specific basin, and the engineers identified several relatively inexpensive quick fixes to alleviate the issue, but I could not look at any of you in the eye and say that we fixed the problem. We seem to have given us some breathing space. I think perhaps the most... I think perhaps the most beneficial aspect of this is that, I think last year, we updated the City Council that IDOT was fast-tracking culvert work and culvert replacement at Route 31 by Fargo. And this is gonna be our opportunity to get this study done in advance. So we'll have a fairly good idea what the hydraulic flows are going to be through that culvert. So instead of having IDOT put in a 16-inch culvert, and maybe we needed actually twin 48-inch culverts to allow for emergency bypass, for example, we'll have that answer before IDOT starts the project. And while IDOT's gonna look at the neighborhood of Fargo and 31, we'll be able to ascertain what that watershed is tributary to. So going all the way back up to Western, for example, and going all the way up to the metro commuter lots, we'll be able to have a really good idea what should be flowing through that structure, which will allow us, God bless you, to encourage IDOT and work with IDOT to fix the problem in the future, instead of, again, blowing an opportunity to really have a meaningful impact for the future.
Thank you. I guess you're gonna answer the question as it relates to the county and what their requirements are, and if this serves some type of a purpose further upstream?
I would say this study doesn't really address anything with the county stormwater ordinance. In fact, this is kind of an offshoot from a couple of years ago, when we looked into doing the implementation with the Stormwater Utility. One of the recommendations from that consultant then was that we do a comprehensive review of our watershed, and with that review, there would be the genesis and the start of looking at the capital improvement projects that would be needed throughout the community to, you know, so we could prioritize those and start implementing them as funding became available.
So there won't be any real synergy then between, let's say, for instance, St. Charles and Geneva, and Geneva and Batavia then, as it relates to it, based off of, like, studies that they might be already completed, or they might be completing in the near future?
We're starting to delve into Greg Chismark's segment here of the tri-pack, but the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance regulates development and everybody's actions within Kane County. So even though we're an independent agency, we still, the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance applies to us. The DuPage Stormwater Ordinance applies to us when we discharge into West Chicago for the future southeast industrial park. So the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance isn't necessarily related to this, nor are our MS4 permits or NPDS permits, which is permits that we have with the federal and state government for stormwater discharge. This study is one of the best management practices for both those permits, because it allows for strategic planning for the future, as well as identifying what relatively short-term fixes, or what we should be doing better maintenance-wise, which, again, was identified during the Stormwater Utility. But how this relates to the other agencies is, and that's where I'm gonna punt to you, Greg, because now you're starting to delve into state law for drainage.
I have one more question for you. So then you're really saying that this study will be complimentary then, as we look at our stormwater management program? That was, we're talking about $10 million that we're talking about potentially?
Correct.
That we need to be looking at here over the next five years, 10 years?
Correct, and this study is what's going to give you the actual list of projects.
It's gonna determine the priority areas and where we want to spend that money first.
Correct. It's also gonna have the advantage that as redevelopment opportunities occur, we'll have a really good idea what that impacts on our basin are for redevelopment.
So that's the next huge capital project probably that we might undertake, now that the waste treatment project's been completed. This is, in your area, in your world at Public Works, this is probably what's out there that we'll need to be looking at pretty seriously.
Correct.
Good evening, Greg Chismark, WBK Engineering. To add to what Rich and Brian said, the county, there are several tasks, though, that in the scope of what we've looked at, first of all, this study is intended to be comprehensive. So what staff has asked us to do is a comprehensive study. So Kane County drafted a new stormwater ordinance recently, last year. So that's in place. One of our tasks is to look at the subdivision ordinance and other ordinances, and make sure with that new ordinance that there are no conflicts. That's a minor task, but it's a coordination task that we've been asked to do. The other element, Rich mentioned NPDS, so relative to regulation, that is something that we'll be looking at, capital projects, and specifically, one of the subconsultants on the team, Geo-SinTech, will be looking at what the Fox River Study Group may be recommending and potential impact. So we're gonna be forward-looking in terms of some of the operations, some of the Public Works operations, and expecting to make recommendations relative to what may be happening to regulations. So regulation isn't driving this specifically, but it's intended to be comprehensive, and we're aware of, we're expected to be aware of changing regulations, and how Geneva can best position itself to make sure that, what those budget impacts are, if that helps answer the question.
That's very helpful, and gives me a better understanding of where we're headed with this. Thank you.
Mr. Chismark, if I could, just a quick comment. Is it a fair statement to say that this study will also prepare us for any anticipatory regulations?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because I serve on the Kane County Stormwater Management Committee, and that was an exhaustive process.
Yes.
Exhaustive process. We are, of course, you know, a certified community and all that good stuff. We adopt those rules and laws. But I know Alderman Marx and others have been around a while, where we've seen challenges, no pun intended, percolate in certain areas. And without doing a comprehensive study, we are indeed trying to put a finger in the dyke. It's just a waste of our time.
Yeah, and, you know, one other comment, too, and you had asked the question about other upstream-downstream communities and some of the coordination. And again, that was one of the things staff said. Who are the other agencies that might be impacting the corporate boundaries of Geneva? Or where we may be sending some water to, that they may, may be some opportunities for even some collaborative projects? I don't know that, but I think they've asked us to keep our eyes open for those opportunities as well.
Alderman McGowan.
Thanks. So I have a question regarding the timing of this. I see that there's like a final report that will be submitted to city staff at some point. Is there a minimum amount of rainfall that your company needs in order to successfully complete all of the studies that are planned?
No, so this is not a flow monitoring-type study. Although, to be totally honest, I kind of like it when it rains hard, because then we can see where the issues or the problems are. But we'll be gathering, the first step in this study is gathering data, a lot of historic data, existing data, two public open houses, input from you. You get calls, you understand, in your words, where problems are, so stay the gathering. So we're not necessarily actually monitoring the flow. In order to come up with the study, we expect to identify those areas. One other aspect, too, there's a Task 5 in the proposal that talks about ongoing, once a report's delivered, ongoing monitoring as needed. So it's kind of an on-demand. If there is a big rainfall event, staff wants us to go out and monitor, we're on-call. We go out, we can monitor, we, there's a variety of tasks associated with that.
Okay, so like, you know, hopefully this wouldn't happen, but let's just say hypothetically, there was a historic drought for the next 12 months in the northern Illinois area. You'd still be able to complete all of the studies, and you would have, you would still have all of the information and input needed?
Yes.
I don't know how that is, but I'm not the expert at stormwater management, so, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Clements.
Thank you. Director Babika, this one's for you, and I think I know the answer, but since you're here, I just thought I'd ask. As you know, there are those issues over Brentwood ponds. Is it, does this, would the outcome of this have any impact on that in dealing with that issue, or is that outside of the scope of all of this? Because it's more of a private matter.
Yes and no. Or it depends.
Fair enough.
I think that was my quote from the last time I was up here. What we're gonna be looking at is we're going to be looking at what's tributary to those facilities. And the facilities are maintained by the HOA, which is now defunct, which is why there's an active SSA. But if we know that there is a capacity issue with the facilities, then we can start planning for that appropriately, be that with the City Council, be that with the homeowners association in that area. One thing that I would also like to add, and I meant to say that when I was first up here, once we've completed this study, it also gives us a leg up on competition for applying for grant opportunities at the state, federal, even the county level, because we'll be able to show the grant committees that we have the comprehensive study, and we know what the issues are, and that we're just not trying to seek money to fix a problem. It's, we've identified an opportunity here, and we know what the issues are, and here's the statistical information in the background. Gives us a leg up on the competition.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Geo-Sin. We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk, have any trouble you to take the roll call?
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 3B, folks, or, excuse me, item 3A passed with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 3B is to consider draft resolution authorizing the Community Development Director to lease real property owned by the City of Geneva in the Prairie Green Preserve for the 2020 and 2021 crop seasons at a rate of $261 per tillable acre. Is there a motion?
Some hopes.
Motion by Alderman McGowan? Seconded by Alderman Burkhart? Mr. McCready.
There's little I can add to this one, but as stated, item before you concerns the lease of 245 acres in the Prairie Green Preserve. With the expiration of the previous lease agreement, city staff did publicly solicit proposals for the 2020 and 2021 growing seasons. The city did receive one proposal, I believe, from the previous lease holder. Previous lease holder uses environmentally sound methods and has developed a unique knowledge of the site itself. Staff recommends approval of the lease agreement. And then we do have Community Development Director David Groot here with us this evening to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. McCready, Alderman Kilburg, or Mr. DeGroot?
I had one question in Section 1, rental provisions. It would be the, for a second, be the third sentence. It says, "The final installment may be adjusted to account for the actual acres harvested by the Leesee at the lease rate of $261 per acre." So in other words, I'm asking the question, in other words, if there's no crop, the Leesee has no obligation to pay us the $261 per acre? If you look at what just recently happened, this last spring, with the inclement weather, the rain, and the delayed planting, there was a lot of corn ground, thousands of acres across Illinois, that weren't planted. So in other words, is this a, is this a, does this essentially waive the Leesee's obligation to pay the second-half installment? If, in fact, he fails to have a crop, or opts not to have a crop, or, let's say, in July gets hailed out?
This provision, we actually had to use it this year. There were some broken drain tiles that prevented them from harvesting a good portion of the acreage. So in that case, we had to adjust the tillable acreage down to what they were actually able to farm.
As far as lease agreements with crop ground, I don't know if that's a provision that's very common.
I don't either. This is my only familiarity with leasing farmland.
I mean, you know, I think the Leesee's obligation is to have crop insurance, I think, is the way that he can protect his investment. I don't know. Am I misinterpreting the contract? For that reason, I would move that we strike the reference to actual acres harvested from the contract that's been presented, go back to the Leesee and see if he's agreeable.
Let me ask one quick question. Is the Leesee here?
Dale Pitstick is here this evening, yes.
If you would like to address that question raised by Alderman Kilburg, and then if there still seems to be some, perhaps, discussion to be had, I would recommend, based on the city attorney's recommendation, that we just pull this from the agenda and get clarification before we bring it back, as opposed to negotiating in public. So, certainly.
No problem, thank you, Dale Pitstick. My family's farmed it, or my father has farmed it since 2004. He has planted every acre every year up until this year. With all the wetlands surrounding everywhere, with the amount of rains, it was a huge loss to the back acreage. So that was what he was doing. We do have crop insurance, but non-planted acres doesn't get you, yield you what you would if you would have planted something.
The fees less this year than it was last year?
Correct. Correct.
So I'm just saying, you're asking us to take the entire risk in this regard.
You've been a great Leesee, I have no qualms, but I just see that as, you know, when you lease land and you plant a crop, you're like every other farmer in the United States, you take the risk.
Right.
So, Alderman, can we, here...
Yeah, I don't want to negotiate it here, but I'm just explaining my position.
Understood, absolutely understood. But for clarity, why don't we just pull this back and have a discussion offline? And I suspect we can come to a reasonable accommodation for both parties. Your points absolutely been made. I just don't want to have a full discussion online in real time.
Yeah, no, thank you.
How's Steve doing?
Good, good. He wanted to tell me, or tell you guys, he was not retiring, he just got some other land and...
Good for him.
Gave him some.
Good for him.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need a recommendation to pull this from the agenda? We're just gonna pull it, the chair is gonna pull this matter from the agenda, and we'll discuss the issues that Alderman Kilburg raised. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we are at new business or public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to... Yes, of course, welcome.
Are we on TV or not?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good. So then I'll say what I've said before. In December of 2016, I went to Sedona, Arizona, and came back, met my son there, who does not live in Geneva, has not lived in Illinois since 2009, and came back to find my yard full of clay. Somebody dumped clay in my front yard while we were gone for two weeks. I had it hauled away in the fall, and before I had it hauled away, I had the soil tested by a lab, and I got the proper IEPA permit for it. The soil was fine. I had the ground underneath where the soil had been on my property tested, and it was fine also. So I just want to get this on the record. I also want to get on the record, and I've done this before, but I'm not sure if the television was on or off. My house, my former house was never on the National Register. I have an email here from Rachel Labowitz, who is the head of the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency in Springfield. This is from January 9, 2017. And she writes that she doesn't know my house, never heard of it. It's never been on the National Register of Historic Places. Then I have another email from Andrew Heckencamp at the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, who says the same thing, that I would have to apply, and it couldn't be put on the National Register without my consent. Okay? So I have that here, too. And then I have an email from Michael Lambert. This is from March 11, 2019, where I just asked him so I could get an email from him and see what he said if my house was on the National Register, because I had rumors that it was. And he said, "Since January 2017, you have been informed repeatedly that your property is not now, never has been, and is not being nominated to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places." My house, my former house, is not the Zimmerman House. There is a Wilson Brothers book out there that shows my house as the Zimmerman House. But actually, I had a meeting a couple of years ago with my lawyer, Michael Lambert, and David DeGroot, and we talked about the fact that this was an error or had been altered for... forged, I don't know, in the book. And the real Zimmerman House is Paul Duke's house, 1210 Batavia Avenue. And his house, why I'm bringing this up, is his house was landscaped by Jens Jensen three times in the 1920s. So he has the Zimmerman House. And with a 10-minute conversation with David Shoals at the Recorder of Deeds, he can track through who owned all the properties and show that 520 Ray Street was the Robert Fauntleroy House. So I also, and I've sent this out many times, have a letter from Robert Greasey of the University of Michigan, who's a Jensen expert, who says it, the property was not Jens Jensen. And then I have an email to me from Michael Lambert. This was recent, let's see, maybe a year and a half ago, and he says he consulted with Julia Bakrock, a Jensen expert in Chicago whom he respects, and she agrees that it, the property was not designed by Jens Jensen. So why am I bringing all of this up when I don't own the house and sold it six months ago? It's because my family is being preyed upon. Gordon, my son Alex, I don't, we don't own this anymore, but you have actually created some allegations about Gordon that are not true. He can't defend himself, he has dementia, and I believe that what you're doing is framing him and swindling me. So you all look puzzled, but anyway, I just would like to get this on record. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the dais? A motion to adjourn would be in order? Is there something? Alderman Berg makes the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.